Right, being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the child in November first twenty twenty-three meeting. First up, we have a discussion on podcast LLC, special permit decision for a dog to be created eighty-seven Mother Hill Road. First thing I'm gonna do is just read the letter that was no doubt. To whom it may concern, on August ninth, twenty twenty-three, the child planning board had a public hearing on the application for a podcast LLC located eighty-seven little mother road, child of the maximum of seven. The public hearing was closed and afterwards, the board discussed the application. Then more than votes approved the application with three to two vote. Subsequent to the meeting, the attorney complaint were realized in order for the application to be approved, the required vote needs to be a super majority or a vote of four to one in the case of podcast application. For the discussion during the application should come back before the plan work to be voted on. At the November first twenty twenty-three plan board meeting, once again, a vote on the application. Once a discrepancy is explained to them, the plan board of the department and our attorney side and why it being transparent because you were noticed, they noticed a brought up for an interested party. We are now sending you this letter informing you of the new vote that will take place on the podcast application at our November first twenty twenty-three meeting. There'll be no public comment because the public hearing session is not closed, but you're welcome to attend if you'd like to hear the front of the discussion. And the vote on the application, the meeting is in person by zoom on the zoom information will be on our November first twenty twenty-three meeting agenda once it is posted on the town website, please contact plan board if you have any questions in regards to the application we discussed. By the borders in November first twenty twenty-three, Ben and board meetings and still Randy Benson, playing with director. My attorney is supposed to zoom when he is not, but I guess Randy, do you want to give us a quick?
In the waiting room.
Many here, yeah.
All right.
Just signing in now.
Great.
Leave the instant protest. I saw him signing in.
All right, Dave, how are you doing?
Excellent, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you. Good to see you all.
Yeah, so since you signed off, we have opened the 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 meeting for our and our first agenda item up is the podcast LLC. I have read the the letter that went out as far as explaining why we are having this this discussion tonight. And if you have anything to add to it, as explained, they need to be a super majority from our vote from August ninth and it wasn't we.
Oh, sorry. I lost you there just at the very end.
So I mentioned how the our vote, the the votes vote need to be a super majority from our meeting from August ninth. And it wasn't. So if you want to add anything to that, go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So folks should understand that the vote from at at the close of the public hearing was a three to two vote in favor of the special permit. And I think folks were under the impression that that was a grant of the special permit. And I think the applicant was probably under that impression as well. And so the board, however, a three to two vote is effectively was a denial effectively. And so I wanted to give the board an opportunity to revisit that issue because it was my sense of the room that folks thought that they had granted the special permit. So you have a couple of different options. Before you, you can entertain a motion for reconsideration. On that prior vote, the board can reopen the deliberations without reopening the public hearing and take some other vote if there are going to remain two votes against the the application for special permit. Then I think those those two votes need to explain the bases for their denial so that we can incorporate that into some form of a of a decision. Having said that, I also received from the applicant an indication that they had, in fact, located an alternate site. Counsel for the applicant called me today and we spoke. They have identified a site. They are continuing to ask for the six months. I think they're hopeful that they'll have that locked down sooner. It's a site in Oxford. I believe it's under purchase and sale agreement and it's subject to financing. So they're trying to line up the financing for that. And just by way of background, even going a little bit further back, the reason that we took this back on a remand was to revisit the board's decision that gave it discretion to revisit the number of dogs. And the advice is rather than handling it that way, the better courses for the board to either grant or or deny, the board still has the the ability to deny the motion, but to allow the use for a particular period of time rather than reserving discretion to the board long term to revisit the number of dogs at any time. So the better way to do that is to set a specific number of dogs like we talked about last time. And then just to grant the special permit for a period of time.
All right. Thank you very much for the overview as well as laying it out for us. Yeah, go right ahead. Anything if you have anything to add as far as your progress, as far as I know that we discussed at the August ninth meeting, how you were, the vision was to move to another facility to basically get your house back is just understandable. And since your attorney shared with our attorney, he shared with us, if you don't mind elaborating.
Sure. So obviously, there's still, you know, certain things I can't discuss.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. But we have actively been since the board's last decision, pursuing different locations. My understanding is that someone from the board actually reached out to one of the locations that we were in active negotiations with to verify that we were, which I think is a different discussion, but that regardless, we we have signed a purchase and sale agreement with a location in Oxford that happened to come up for sale when we were pursuing other options. And have done all of our they all of our due diligence to this point that we needed to do. We have just having just signed the purchase and sale, the next period of time is our due diligence, making sure that it is an effective location for where we're trying to move. And then obviously securing the financing. So but everything looks pretty positive. We're in conversations with a banker, an SBA underwriter, Clark University, who does free business consultations for any businesses that are interested in putting together business plans as well as a broker through Keller and Stausky. And then we have lawyers and accountants as well that are reviewing all the documents. So we took the, as your attorney said, we took the three to two vote as a yes and, you know, hit the ground running doing everything that was required of us to make sure that we were checking off all of our boxes, despite the fact that everyone that I spoke to after this said that it was an impossible task to secure a location in six months, that a year would be a much more reasonable amount of time. The two most dangerous words that someone can say to me is you can't. So I hit the ground running and we've been doing everything you can to make that happen.
All right. That's great news. I'll have it for you.
It hasn't happened yet.
No, but no, it shows the hard work and diligence you put to it. And I think as we appreciate your diligence for following through with what you said, not everyone does that. All right. And I attorney McKay has laid it out for us as far as what our auctions as a board are. You know, right about as far as wanting to be in a motion for reconsideration as far as that vote from August ninth. And what was that other option we had?
Yeah. So so one, one option is is a reconsideration. Another option is is just a a different special permit under different terms. If there are other terms upon which the board can can get to yes, that's that's an option as well. I mean, you folks basically have the full menu of options available to you that you would have in a special permit decision.
All right.
I have a question for attorney McKay.
Yep.
If we make a motion, does it have to be the exact same motion we made before, or can we tweak the motion?
You can tweet i- i- if you, if if the if the board doesn't have four votes to get to the prior motion, then then that motion can be amended in some fashion.
Okay.
So for example, if there were some variable that that got the board to four votes that they were all comfortable with, then then you could do that. You're you're you essentially have everything open to you in terms of how you structure this decision.
So we don't have to make a motion identical to the one that was made in August and then discuss it. We could change it and make a new motion.
You could. Yes, yes.
So what was the motion?
On the other hand, if 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 you have, you had two no votes last time, if one of those votes has changed, then then that that would get you to a decision as well.
The motion that was made in August.
Was for last six months.
Six months. Repair six month period for fifteen dogs allowed and three personal dogs. And that's what got us to the three to vote.
Yep.
Which we thought that was okay, but yeah, it didn't technically, it didn't pass because.
For the special permit.
So so to the chair, have you been at fifteen dogs or have you been at a level above or below fifteen dogs? We've been at fifteen dogs, but in full transparency, I haven't been able to take a paycheck in three months, you know, since everything happened because I have staff and you know, once that was limited to fifteen, we weren't able to operate the way that was able to really function. So.
Okay. So that basically gives them to February ninth or or potentially would have given them to February ninth. We're three months into that now.
Yeah.
Fair thoughts.
Right.
So we would need a motion to reconsider. Basically, to get the.
Yeah. I mean, I think we beat it down pretty because we toss it around a lot during that August ninth meeting. So do we have a motion to reconsider the vote from August ninth on podcast LLC?
That what we need to do? Okay.
It could be, it could be however you want.
Okay.
Yeah, but I mean, this is just a reconsider, I would think would be a a re-vote on the same conditions.
Correct.
Or or they could be amended to. New timeline or number of dollars, whatever.
That's correct. So so, Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in.
Go right ahead, Dave.
Sure. So so if if the board votes to reconsider its prior vote, then you are basically back to the original mo- and and that passes, right? And you'd need a simple majority to reconsider. If if that passes, then then you would be back to the motion that was before the board on August ninth and you could revoke that. And if you got and the outcome of that vote would be the outcome of that vote. If that didn't pass, then the board could entertain some other motion for a special permit under other terms, or it could simply sort of take a three to two vote as a no vote, and then that would be the decision that would be written up.
And reconsider and it's a three to vote again.
It doesn't pass.
It's.
Still need the super majority.
A majority to reconsider, you would only need a majority to reconsider, but then you have to vote. So I thought I thought the the terms were fair and I'm not sure I wouldn't extend it.
No.
Yeah. So keep the same news, which would expire early, it's by February.
February ninth.
Okay, that's a question. It would be six months from this date or six months from August date?
It would be six months from, well, it it depends. My consideration would be six months on the August date, right? Three months from this date.
That's what I wanted to do.
Reconsider the original.
The original motion.
Okay.
And then they would just come back in February or whatever.
He needs an extension.
We knew for that again for more time, whatever the game.
Let me run a word.
Is there a motion to reconsider the vote from August ninth?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Do you consider the?
Okay, yeah. Although I.
I.
All right.
I.
All right.
So we can look at that that same motion from August ninth and give them six months from August ninth to February sixth to come up with another plan and and continue to operate until that point at fifteen dogs with the same stipulations that we had at that point, or we could change it. All right.
In.
And add new guidelines. So I mean, my concerns are still there from from what they were before. So I I think I'm I'm not willing to do an extension from that. I think it was pretty clear what we expected. And you know, we go three to three votes. So but anybody else wants to discover, make it?
So just for a point of clarity, ours, the person who called the other the person that we thought that maybe you were going just to make sure you were following through. And you were. So I was very impressed with that. They expressed that you're finding a man and you have a great business. All props to you. So do not take it like I was or the board with me. And I was making sure that you were following through on what you said, because there's many people that come upon upon us and say things and they do not follow through. There was no reflection on you was for the past people that came here. Okay? So I was just want to make that point clear to you.
May I respond?
Yep.
Negotiations are a very delicate process. I have been back and forth negotiations with a particular entity for some time. Having someone address themselves and as a member of the planning board is the same thing as all the example that I I discussed it with just with other people is a police officer saying, hey, you need to do this just because I'm a police officer. People give information just because you have the title. I recognize and I recognized in the moment when I got the notification of of what had happened, why it had happened. But realistically, that's internal business operations. And again, negotiations are delicate. There's a lot of back and forth. There's a lot of time. There's a lot of bowing out of things to make sure that you get the best opportunity available. And realistically, there's no guarantee that the purchase and sale agreement that we've signed is going to go through. And realistically, again, just because we're already in the weeds, the entity that we're talking about, they had agreed to renegotiate price. But now with this phone call, there's been pressure from the board. They knew that everything was happening with the town. And again, I was able to play it off, you know, make it sound like it wasn't that big of a deal, but to get a phone call from someone with the title saying, I am a member of the planning board. Maybe that extra $2,000 a month that I was potentially going to get off, I can't get now. Which means at the end of all of this, I can't actually move into this place. So while I understand what you were doing and you had the best of intention, there were definitively potentially unintended consequences from that. And I would recommend in the future, if anything like that were to happen, just make a phone call to whoever the business owner is saying, we would like to verify this because I think that's a reasonable accommodation, at least for me to say, hey, the planning board just wants to verify some information. They're going to be calling you because that doesn't undermine those business interactions.
Well, that's basically what I said to the person. So it's not that, and I made it abundantly clear. I know you you're seem like you're taking it the wrong way. A very nice conversation. All props. Not to reading, not to throw wet blanket on your your negotiation, I think. Or check calling to see if you had made an interest in or if you're interested in the property and if you hadn't contacted her. That was it.
I I I have a client by who's a member of a planning board of a different town. And I asked if this was was common practice and they said they had never heard of anything like this. So again, I appreciate you saying what you said and I appreciate you standing up for me, but this definitely seems something atypical.
Oh, I wasn't standing up for I was standing up for the neighbors and the people that are concerned about your business and wanting not to have you there or supportive of you moving forward somewhere. So it was not, it was just not me personally is taking into consideration everything we heard of this. The neighbors that are quite concerned about, and again, there's complaints again here listed. That's where that basis came from. All right.
All right. Any other discussion? On the 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 vote for reconsideration vote is asked anymore. You know, the discussion to keep the fifteen dogs plus the three personal and then the August ninth of twenty twenty-three to February ninth of twenty twenty-four is the the approval dates. Right?
That's okay with me.
All right.
So I'll make a make a motion to approve fifteen dogs for the period of three months from the ninth of November, which gets to still to the February, February ninth.
Six months.
Six months from August nine. From August nine.
Yeah.
Okay. So these are the same dates. Fifteen dogs, three personal dogs. And no business after that, no permit after that.
If you're a second.
Second that.
All those in favor?
I.
Jane, Venson, I.
I. Jones, where?
Ross, and I. All right.
In this.
With five zero.
Five zero. Five yeses.
So it is fast. Same.
All right, Davis, anything else?
Do it right. Do we? I don't think so.
Okay.
No. So I I I get next step. Randy, will you prepare a draft decision? I'll be happy to take a look at that.
Yep, I'll be happy. I'll get a general, I'll send it over to you where you're.
Okay. And then I I did see Howard Potash on the line who represents the applicant. Howard, I'll connect you tomorrow. We should get a report into the court just to let the judge know what the current status is and the outcome of tonight's hearing. All right. Mr. Chairman, and let me for something else. I'll sign off.
I think we're good. Correct with the term, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, folks. Have a great night.
All right. All right.
Hands around the corner.
Thank you.
We have a discussion point for you.
No problem. All right. Seven ten request from Joan Joan Berlin game for partial lease on covenant and review subdivision, release lots twelve B well, block B lot twenty-nine and lot twelve, lot B lot thirty-four off the Central People Road. We have a partial release of covenants here. Give us some background on this, Randy.
Yes, they have two existing lots that are vacant. One is on Scott Drive. It is also one at the end of Elliot Drive. The one at the end of Elliot Drive doesn't have access to the front. She's a never extended to the street.
Yep.
I can't understand what he said. Sorry.
Sorry. So their intent in the in a nutshell is to I mean, we leased covenant on both lots. It is the one on Scott Drive, it has the wetlands area in the project. Would they want to lease covenant on both lots, combine the lots? And then basically have access to the lot, to what is the existing lot on Elliot Drive.
With in this packet, Randy, in the in the partial lease of covenants, what law is it identified on?
Is that the open land? Let's. So it's not continuous.
No, it's well, it's it's vacant, but it's not part of their open space property that that we feel sorry we go yet too far along. So if you look at this first page, they have raw on Scott.
That's the one on Scott Drive.
S three.
Yep, S three.
The ones is funky shaped rock that's actually right behind it.
Yep.
That's Mark Openland.
Yeah, it's open land because it wasn't considered a buildable lot. So it's not part of the open space, but it is open land.
Okay. So that wasn't the open space that was required.
No, that's further down off Scott Drive in this state located. And so since that lot on it's a lot off in Elliot Drive anyways. Does not have the frontage, but they're planning to connect these two lots together and then access the property. That comes through from Elliot Drive.
Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead. Yes.
My name's Anne Marie Hurley. I'm on my husband's computer. I represent Joan Berlin game. And I submitted the the documentation. So I just want to let you know that I'm here.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Did I describe everything correctly?
You did. The the covenant, I think, addresses that that what is called open land will would be open land for, I believe it was for three years. And then that expired and now the the Joan Berlin game because of her husband is passed away. Joan owns it solely. And because of the so these roads, I I'm sure you know, have always already been accepted as public ways. But what happened was the the you'll see that lot twelve B twenty-nine doesn't have enough frontage.
Yep.
But twelve B thirty-four does, but twelve B thirty-four has wetlands. So the idea is to combine all of this into one lot and solve both the problem of the frontage and the wetlands and have one good sized lot.
Makes sense. So that's the sole reason for the purpose we both release of the covenants.
Right. Okay. So we use covenants on both lots and then they're going to combine them. They want to build their own one.
Okay.
Yeah, then they'll then they'll apply for a building from a building permit. Yeah.
All right.
Chairman, I'm sorry. My name's Alan Turner. I'm going to butter.
Yeah, Alan, hold up. I'll open it. I'll open it for a public for in a second. Let me just check with the board to see if they have any questions or comment. Alan, I'll get back in a second. Thank you.
So and and how much of that open land and and how much of the lot on Scott Drive is is wetland? Is that not buildable because of the wetlands?
We probably can't access it.
Yeah.
On Scott Drive.
That's the only thing that makes. Show here.
Yeah.
Nothing. Nothing, no no wetland to mark there, so.
No, well, it was. They basically, I mean, it was subdivided part of the whole subdivision, but. I mean, this is this subject been around for a long time.
Eighty-nine.
Yeah, so. Back then, I mean, if they were to try to build a house on that lot on Scott Drive. Then, yes, it would have to show the wetlands and base on what we've seen with the match and everything there. You got wetlands on the front of the, any access to Scott Drive could be cost prohibitive, basically. So eventually, whether they get approved from the conservation commission.
So there doesn't appear to be any frontage at all on Elliot Drive, it's just.
Well, it's it's kind of this. I don't know exactly how many feet, but is it, there is a little bit of frontage. Maybe like twenty-five feet, enough, why not towards driveway?
All you need is for access.
Doesn't it looks like it kind of.
I mean, we're just releasing the covenant.
So why was the covenant put on there to begin with, just?
Or difficult subdivision of the name, just like being getting drive and any others. Before they can actually build on the lot, they just never ask for the covenants.
Excuse me, Mister ma- Mister.
Go right ahead.
Um the purpose of the covenant was for the development of was for the roads and ways. Essentially. I didn't handle it, my my husband, who was here, attorney darling, did at that time. And um he just prompted in my ear that it was strictly about the the roadways. And and the um. Infrastructure.
What's the uh through the chairman, I I guess through council, what what's the partial release of the covenant?
For these lots. I mean, I s- I suppose we could have requested a complete release of the covenant because it's been so long. All the roads that have been completed and accepted as public ways. There's nothing left to so um. I mean, the roads are done.
And this is really the only last remaining piece to uh.
To my knowledge, I don't, Elliot, are you listening in? I see that you're here, are you present at your computer?
Yes, I'm present, I'm here, I can hear.
Are there any other lots?
There's one at the very end of uh Scott Drive Extension, it's a fifty foot. Right away to the eighteen acre parcel.
Okay, so. But that's not part of this subdivision plan, correct?
That's not part of what we're asking right now, no.
That that lot in particular is a part of the. Um public open, which intended to be originally part of the public open space. That lot has been addressed at this time, so you might want to keep it as a project. You if you give it full covenant, it is. You do release in that lot as well.
We'd only, we're only asking for a partial with these covenants at this time.
I see, so partial covenant adjusts these two lots, not that other lot.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Are any other questions?
And we know that this was not meant for open space, it was meant for. It was an open lot.
Yeah, they had originally come with a subdivision, then they had come back when they extended Scott Drive. And because they had created the open space on Scott Drive.
Scott Drive Extension?
Then they created the eighteen acres of public open space on Scott Drive. Um this lot was not needed as part of the public open space. That was part of the Scott Drive Extension application.
And this motion is really just to release those lots, but not combine them.
Yeah, I mean, they'll have to.
After the fact, but as far as procedural, this is the first step if they're gonna go ahead and do that.
And combine them with the open spaces, that the.
Combine lots.
Combine these lots with the open land because these lots aren't contiguous. If you look at, I don't know if you have a copy of plan book six thirty, plan forty-one there. I did submit it, but I don't know if you have it in front of you.
The plan that we have is the um Glenview subdivision, it shows um. Lori Lane, Hemlock Road, Elliot Drive, Scott Drive.
It should say amended, does it say amended plan? Right, so that you can see where all the open spaces that, no, excuse me, that's at the end of Lori Lane. But if you see, it says open land and it's broken lines showing the um. Lot twelve. Aboutting the open land and then it backs up to. The lot on Scott Drive, you see that?
Yeah.
Alright. So that that would be what they would apply for a building permit. But this is, but this is what we're asking for now, is the partial release of that land, partial release of the covenant on that land.
And to put them in open space?
Just to release the covenants on these two lots and that's it.
Okay.
That's it.
Just for this. They go forward, they.
A and R to combine the lots.
Okay. Now, is there a covenant on any other land except for that open space and in in this lot, for these two lots?
No. That's all that's left.
Um anything part of the road that was held back because of? Was it ever needed?
I have. I don't know.
It it I mean, the road would be for a number of years now, so.
Accepted without the turnaround thing though. At the end of Elliot? Yeah, at the end of Elliot. Turn around at the end of Elliot Street, Elliot Road.
The actual pavement doesn't extend up that far. Actually physically isn't that far.
It's actually seventy-seven feet.
Seventy-seven feet.
Paved.
Correct, I actually imagined.
So it it would not continue all the way down to the corner of that open land then?
No, it's just dead ended right there at the seventy-seven feet from the property line itself.
So you wouldn't be able to access that parcel from uh Elliot Drive at all, you'd have to Elliot and Scott.
We're not talking about, what we're always gonna do is releasing the covenants, that's it. We're not talking about access and I think. Access will, that question will come in during A and R, or more or less during a building permit. Which is announced.
Okay.
I think, do I have that right?
Yeah, but then they have adequate frontage on Scott Drive, they use that frontage theoretically. They do have adequate coordination.
And there's no other release, there's no other reason.
Yeah.
For the development thing, there's nothing in the notes to hold that for any other purpose.
So, Alan, you 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 uh identified yourself earlier on as a butter, you had a question?
Yeah, so I understand, I think what's happening here, my concern question is. Um if they're trying to build a lot off of Elliot Drive. They release the covenants. They sell that entire lot of land now Elliot Drive and what's. Uh showing as twelve B thirty-four on Scott Drive. They combine that all as one lot, does that make that entire lot buildable? Because twelve B thirty-four is a wetlands, supposed to be a protected green space.
Yeah, so. I think that'd be more of a conservation. Item, and I think that'd be a question for the building inspector as far as if they have adequate frontage and space. To and then access for a a building permit.
Yeah, I've seen, if they did anything that would impact the wetlands, they have to go before the conservation commission.
And there's there's nothing in the documentation that set that lot aside for. Or green or open space. Do we have the covenant, Randy, that we can read through or?
Maybe nine. Or whenever it was approved.
I mean, is there language in the covenant saying that this box will be saved as a wetland or something, right? That's where would this remain open space or or something like? I'd like to just read the covenant, I have I have no problem with it, but it's just partial release of a covenant, but you don't have any information.
Virtually available, it's to get out actually.
Me, this. Before the horse is probably no big deal, but it'd be good to read through it just to make sure it's. Especially from back in nineteen eighty-nine. Um don't know what the board is thinking at that point, or what the the go throughs and sort on on the approval of the. Of the subdivision.
Alright, so you guys wanna continue this, do we get that information on the original one?
So make a motion to continue the discussion. On the covenant release for for Berlin game on Scott Drive.
Two lots, twelve B dot twenty-nine, twelve.
Thirty-four to our next meeting, which is.
We have the meeting on uh scheduled for November fifteenth. Because it's get further. Um we want to do read this day at our next.
Next scheduled meeting, next scheduled meeting.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I I can find it in, you know, an hour or something, but I think it's like, yeah, if you don't.
All those in favor?
I think I. I thought I submitted it, um.
We have a partial description from nineteen ninety-one.
Hold on.
The idea is made, you know, looking for, if you look at. The extension nineteen ninety-one.
Okay, is that on, is that on extent, the extension?
The extent, the extension would have been right before the covenant that I submitted. It's it's literally one, it's one page, except for the signatures.
Well, we see it as an extension, I don't see the covenant.
Yeah.
The extension is one page and then immediately following it was the covenant.
Alright, all we got is a.
There's an extension attached.
Yes, no, I didn't. Alright.
Okay, we can look into it for the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have it. Check real quick, Randy.
It's book one two seven six two in the upper right hand corner, if you're looking at page numbers.
Okay, alright, I mean. So we have two, uh we'll open in a second on the on the on the table, you have a. Uh motion to uh continue to the next schedule meeting.
Make a motion to continue. Uh I say aye.
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 Aye. Alright, so it's continued to the next meeting. We don't know if it's gonna be November fifteenth yet or December sixth. We'll have the the office contact you no matter what, either way, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, have a great night.
Is there anything else I can provide to you that would be helpful?
We just need. Well, we, I mean, we already voted to continue it, but because we're just looking for the original covenant, just to double to double check.
Alright, I can send that, I'll send that over to Randy.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Alright, we gotta continue on the Edward Services site plan application sixteen service run, they have been requested, they have requested to continue to December sixth. We have a motion to continue with Edward Services to December sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Alright, we have a request for approval for decommission bond, Sturridge Road, solar farm LLC, North Sturridge Road, toll facility. They have requested to be can on another agenda to twelve six. We have a motion to continue uh.
I'll make a motion to continue the decommissioning bond for Sturridge Road, Solar Farm. A second. Can we um just a discussion, what what is this about and and so this is a request for approval of decommissioning bond, are they are they?
With the shore field on North Sturridge Road.
They just started construction on it. They were priorly uh approved years ago.
Yeah, the one is currently, the last one.
Okay, so is there is there a bond already or?
No, there's nothing. Um as of yet, they're they're just starting to, they cleared the site, they're, you know.
Okay, do they have a bond amount or are they looking for a bond?
No, it it's attached to that, great, they submitted one in great. That's one, the question is, and I also provided a copy of that in there as well, is with the uh. In the middle of all this, when the planning board came up with new policy of a hundred thousand megawatt. So. That'll be discussed on like whether they should be held to the new.
Okay.
Planning board policy and so, I provided what they gave us. Uh Mike Angray's review on it and then a copy of the planning board decommissioning policy, so.
Okay, okay, I got you, okay.
But the option couldn't be here tonight, so you request this, you know, put it off till September sixth.
But but at first glance, it looks like they submitted all their stuff before we changed the commission on calculation.
Well, he submitted it, but then, yeah, so. But it was approved afterwards, it's like. You know, it all happened within this, like the same small period of time, so that.
Make a ruling of which. Okay, gotcha. Okay, we got a motion in a second?
All those in favor to continue? Alright, next up, we got Paula Scott of Living Trust, St. Mary's Way subdivision, ain't no approval extension request office said. Stafford Street looking to extend to eleven seventeen twenty twenty-four.
What has to be done there, what's?
Well, he's actually, um he's almost there, um he's hoping. He just keeps missing the boat on getting the paperwork to the government's office to get the town, the road accepted. I mean, the road is done and it's been inspected by Mike Angray, so it, you know, it's all set, but. He's gotta do the proper paperwork to get it on that town meeting for the road to be accepted.
And how many houses are there on that road, it's just, I remember it's it's all family?
Yeah, currently, there's only one, at most, it's only gonna be four and he. Is actually trying to create more of a family compound. Is actually trying to create more of a family compound, so I don't know if the the four houses will actually ever be built. But right now, there's currently only one house up there.
Good. And this is a mixed sentence for one year to eleven seventeen twenty twenty four. They make a motion to approve the subdivision eighty rule, like request for Saint Mary's Way Office Stafford Sheet to eleven seventeen twenty twenty four.
Second.
Seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. Alright, next up, we got Ponican Hill Estate Subdivision Annual Approval Extension Request Office said Stafford Street looking to extend to eleven seventeen twenty twenty four.
We just can't get a hold of them, so um. It's so, you know, it's effectively expired now. Um, however, you know, in the interest of. Looking at town and everything that we come up with some options, if we have somebody that's willing to do it that. With concessions from the town. That maybe we could possibly find a developer to come up with an alternative plan and not require that road to be built all the way through. The board does have the ability to give a waiver on the length of the cul-de-sac. So if we had a developer that would finish the road that's actually there, but then possibly. Get some reduced frontage of lots off of the end of the cul-de-sac. Come save for their cost, basically. It it's something that town might be, you know, the planning board has the ultimate authority, but the town. From a financial standpoint, or for the somebody that might wanna purchase it or something.
So would this, would we need a new subdivision?
So we we don't really have, we need to take any action, we had it on the agenda. But in hopes that they would contact us and they never did, so. It is what it is, we can't. We can't grant an exception because they never asked us.
But now it's expired.
Yeah, now it's expired.
Is there a bond on it?
No.
It's not enough, not even really enough.
That that's there in my.
Fifty bucks.
It's big one round, so it was worth a number.
No, we. Heads for this for the town.
Right, and that's why from a town standpoint that. The town. How should be may come up with a plan that somehow that his town ends up. Um, taking ownership of this, and the town might end up. Be willing to make concessions to allow somebody to develop this, not cost prohibitive.
Will the taxes paid or does the developer owe money to the town? Does do we have any amount of commission?
I don't think they're currently all up to date, and that's where. That there there's a potential that the town could end up taking ownership.
Yeah.
Um, of the lots and the road. The road is actually. Because it's still private, it's actually. Part of the development is not, you know.
I mean, this would be the first step of of setting like. If we refuse, decline the extension, then the town goes after.
Yeah.
After the collection of what it sold them, if they do not. And and it goes to another facet away from us.
Is the town aware of the situation?
Oh, they're very much aware, yes.
So I mean, we we don't have to act the the request expired period.
They never, they've never requested an extension from us.
Yeah.
Yeah, in all honesty, we didn't want to, that's why we tried to reach out to them to get them, you know, and. Basically. Alright, the the bank doesn't want to propose on it, they wanna take ownership, and the developer doesn't want it, you want the bank to propose on them. So it's true, it's because.
Well, I so I just follow the policy, it's out of our hands, they they no longer have a subdivision plan. The town now starts to take whatever the policy is, or whether actually tax taking or whatever.
Right.
Nothing to do with the planning board as far as that.
I would think, yeah. I mean, maybe that'd be a choice per day, but there there was no application ever to us.
Nothing, right, nothing for us to approve.
There's nothing for us to approve.
Right. We should have generated hopes that they would reach out to us and.
You have you have planning, you have, of course, documentation that we tried to.
Yeah, I mean, emails, phone calls, you know, everything that, you know, that we. We you do for numbers, different addresses, you know, every way that we. Try to possibly find the current owner of the property, and we verified with the taxes that was that we were looking for the right person.
So what about the vacant house lots that are up there now, if someone wants to come for a look?
One vacant house lot that can't be built on, because it might be one. That just hasn't been built on.
Okay.
That's part of the, it's but that covenant's been released on that lot, the other lot is up at the cul-de-sac, but they don't have.
Okay.
The actor.
Alright.
Who, how much that that development does the town. Uh, maintain for for roads? Is that all private roads up there or?
No, everything but this small portion of High Cliff Road.
Okay.
Everything else is down.
Everything else is done, and that that goes up the hill.
Yeah.
Good.
Are, do we need to vote to do no action or no?
Uh, no, no, no action.
Got taken.
Just, I just wanna make it aware, we could put it in the minutes that we previously have. Informed the town of the problem, potential problem.
Yes, we had numerous reasons with the town administration, you're very well aware of the issues that are up there.
Alright, next up, we got some A and As, first up, we got PRW Enterprises LLC, number six schoolhouse room.
Yeah, they essentially, these are. Unchained law, but they actually, they're doing the lot line extension. These two lots over here.
A one and B one.
A one, we wanted to move that middle lot line here two lots. I believe it's due to. There was over here, they're moving it over.
This looks like all wetland back here anyways, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, the whole rear of those two lots cannot be built on, so.
And it's still, each of them is still buildable lot?
Yeah, they are still buildable.
Uh, what's the schoolhouse, number six schoolhouse?
Number six.
That a um. The day zone, so forty one thousand per foot, would not be building? Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, they ain't two thirds of a. The uh. Forty one thousand per feet to. Make the lot build a little.
Good.
Was it A one going up there?
They're shrinking, they're shrinking A one, making given more. Square footage to be one.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, very unshaven.
Yeah.
Correct. Alright, do we have?
The narrow point up there.
Make a motion to uh approve the A and R for lots A one and B one on number six schoolhouse room?
Let's second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Wait, aye.
Unanimous.
When dated too.
Okay.
Well, says the best shape.
Yeah.
Pipe writer. Fox customers, we got it.
Yes.
Fall back and now.
You're excited about this?
Yes, the whole hour of training, yeah, it's starting.
I was gonna say, yeah, have this guy picking up at what, two thirty or?
She wanted worried day.
This weekend, yeah. That whole extra hour.
Yeah. Next up.
Four hour my wife, because I have time to do stuff around the house.
I'm gonna go to bed at eight thirty. They get access, access sleep, but now you're gonna stay up later at at night.
No, because it'll be lighter in the morning, right?
Yeah.
Next up, we got Stevens Family Trust, and we have some uh letters and a packet for this, there's some uh.
Yeah, uh, this is. We invented back in, we were right, well, yeah, we're. Um, it's in a trust. And the issue is is. The person who trusted the plan, there's only one member of the trust. And there's two other members, the trust said that they all have to approve this. And when in fact, one of the people that said that they don't approve, they handed a letter, that's actually his house. So they're trying to subdivide his house off the balance of the land. And it's in a family trust with multiple members, and two of the members should said, no.
Okay.
We won't do it, so basically, I think the planning board should not take any action on this unless we have some. Justification from a legal counsel. Their legal counsel, you know, one member of the trust can do this because. It seems like they have a trust of a number of people. And it seems like all members would need to agree in order to approve this, so. I would recommend the planning board not.
No action.
It's just, yeah, no action.
No action.
Unless we.
And it's drawn sort of strange, um, the lines on it. And when you look at it first, yeah. It's um. Yeah.
It's actually up here, this larger tract of land, and they want to cut this, or this piece out of there.
But they have these other dimensions going in. Here that makes it look like that's what they're dividing out. When I first looked at it, that's what I thought. Because why would you put dimensions in? It should at least be at least a broken line. They were getting the dimensions off the house to see that.
Setback, yeah.
But it looks like that's property line.
Yep.
So if a member of the trust that.
Cut off his driveway and they cut off a step.
I don't approve this, so.
Okay.
Um, so we have like legal clarification, I don't know if the planning board can actually do this, because. You know, we have a, we have one member of the trust signing it as the owner, but there's multiple members of this trust.
Yeah, well, I mean, it it's it. I mean, I I agree with you, don't take any action, but even if the board did take action, I I think it's still a legal matter or civil matter, since it's not. You know, we don't know who the owner trust is, it was, it would basically be a non legally binding decision that the board made and they'd have to let it out of court. Yeah, so it's an invalid application.
It's an invalid application.
Good. I like that this.
Why not the signature? Yeah, he's not, the whole trust that's behind it or.
Yeah, it's only one member of the trust signed it as the property.
Unless we get some sort of legal counsel, that's otherwise that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And according to this. He's the trustee.
Yeah.
Who's the trustee?
Okay, okay, and he's the one that that signed the application?
Yeah.
If he's the, if he's the trustee, does, do they need all the signatures of the of the trust?
Well, that's what I wanted, that's what we wanted to see.
Any legal.
Provide. The example is explain to me one of the, that all trustees. Uh, are like co-owners of that large parcel of land. You know, and which actually includes the house. Part of the property.
Joseph is.
And they would all have to agree to have a portion of that mutually owned property subdivided off.
That. They're beneficiaries, but he's the trustee.
It's a legal thing. We need to. The fam say, hey, you're allowed to.
We had town council look at that?
I mean, we still might.
What kind of consequences?
Provide a letter? They really want, yeah.
Good, alright.
Alright, next up, discussion on site plan review.
Yes, as a result, well, not only as a result, but we've actually been discussing it. Here in housing for a while. Um, that the application we did last month with the office on um. Route twenty was a classic example that sometimes you think don't need a full blown site plan, but they still need some sort of guidance on what they can and can't do, so. We like. They need, they need to provide us with something, it might not be as complicated as like a, you know, every gas station, every site plan. So you need some information, it's hard to do without photographs and drawings and everything, so. Our idea was to make it what we consider like a major and a minor site plan, whatever you want to call it. But we'll have one where it's a reduced amount of information, but enough information with the board to make an informed decision. Versus a full blown application that, you know, with all the. Typical information that's provided by an engineer, it's a, you know, cost savings to a property owner where they're not growing up. You know, a huge commercial project or something like that. But it gives the board enough information where they feel. You know, that they can make an adequate informed decision and not just.
So what would be the criteria, I mean, no, no changes in the current plan would require a. Versary glance?
Yeah, I mean, it's like using existing building, you know, no change of the existing buildings, a footprint or, you know, size or however you want it.
Or or use. But but the problem was that, so.
Well, that's.
If I, if I can.
Yeah.
With a chair.
Go ahead.
Um. I would not consider that a major site plan, but I wouldn't consider a minor site plan either. Um, looking at the change of use, and I did stop by the property to look at what they had for their their current parking plan. Um, and what they submitted would not have worked.
Well, I.
At at all what they what they submitted.
I think that even a minor safety, I would still have to show.
Sure, and and I think even some sort of engineering peer peer review, um, if we had given that to. The graves to look at, they would have probably said. You can't, that there's no parking. When I pulled in, the owner was the new owners that were buying, were there when I pulled in, I had to do a three point turn in the driveway just to be able to pull that guy under route twenty, so. It would add, there's, where they had two cars on one side and two cars on the other, it looked nice. On that piece of paper, the drawings, but literally, there was probably eight feet between the cars. That, so this guy would have been, you know.
They still, even the minor one, still could be subject to grave review, it's just, you know, it's a simple review, because it's a bunch of information.
So how much?
That's where we're gonna decide if we're gonna do that. How much information are we going to want, you know? Versus iconic information they may not have to provide if we want, even, I mean, we don't necessarily have to do anything, it's more of a suggestion of. When when we get these simpler type projects. Do we need a full blown plan such as we do when we get an Edward's gas station type?
There's also just quite a discussion, there's also other businesses that move in without a second. They just move in. It's on, under our radar, we don't see it at all.
Yeah, yeah, there's no change of use.
Yeah. It's the office that moves, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is definitely, this was a change of use from a home to a business.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Yeah, and change of use.
Yeah.
Right. But how much is it after they pay a law office or is it? How often do we get cases like that, that people come in here and say, you know, listen, I want that, but I can't afford to. Put a full site down.
That, I mean, we got one, like, the vehicle, which was a lot simpler than that because that was, you know, sand.
Definitely, definitely, with plenty of room and.
Yeah.
Private club and.
Yeah. Do you see people from the EDC coming to?
I mean, so anecdotally, I've had, I remember, um, uh, a couple coming in like for a daycare. They're like, I can't, we want to do a site plan and.
Yeah.
Drawings and.
Well, that I've had that on Route twenty.
Provide a daycare for the town, but we can't afford, it's expensive.
I've, I've had that on like Route twenty, um, if you just after tents is, uh, like an apartment house. And there was gonna be a car lot there.
Yep.
A lot of people wanted to use that building and the, you know, like somebody wanted a secondhand clothing shop and, you know, things like that. But the, you know, they don't want to pay for a huge site plan and the property owner doesn't want to pay for the huge site plan. So it ends up remaining vacant, though.
You could go for percent of change of the property value, you know, if, if it's less than twenty-five percent of the change of value of the property would. Or the improvements that you're making on it. On the property is less than twenty-five percent of the value of the property, then it goes to this.
Take the discretionary out of it?
It'd be just a financial, more of a financial, if you're, which really comes to it. I mean, if you, you know, if you're, say, your building or whatever is worth four hundred thousand dollars and you're putting. Hmm. Say you gotta put a hundred thousand dollars, is it twenty-five, is it thirty percent? You know, I'm putting a hundred thousand dollars and I'm just proofing up. All right, you're underneath that threshold, now these rules will apply for you. But if you go over, you know, half of the value of the property, then you need a full site plan.
Yeah. Almost like a building permit wise.
Yeah.
Do it in the model.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, something like that to that effect. I mean, to Don's point, yeah, it's fine, you're only doing a house, but how much is, what's the instrument to get that driveway into shape or, you know? Or you, there should be some parking at ADA entrance. And that's almost something we could, if we got something, we could drive to the EDC and say, hey, you know, if you want to come, these are kind of, right? We want you to come, there's some kind of.
Right.
Some, some, they forward gifts here, so they have a, so some logic coming into, they're not just. You know, assaulting you, it's like, you don't want to do this, I'll probably make it, you know?
Right.
But and you're, and you, and you guys aren't like just scrambling on your own to try to, so, and everybody's in lockstep, it's like, this is, this is what happens.
Under the current bylaws, we don't have any recourse either, you provided or you don't have the complete application. That's what we're trying to come up.
The, the only thing is. But there was something in bylaws, if it's no change of use, you don't have to go through.
Well, yeah, that's just a site plan. Um, and it might not even require a site plan review depending on what zone is in, if it's already a permitted use. You know, might not require a site plan. There are, you know, properties that that can be done.
Yeah. And what triggered the, the one on Route twenty, was that coming from a residential to a business and that?
Yeah, it was, it's always been a house and now we're going to business. It's permitted use, but change that use would require a site.
Isn't that non-conforming more? I might mix in that.
With that?
That wasn't non-conforming, was it? The house?
The residential was, was. It makes us the. But it was an industrial.
Okay.
This was a little different than the inside and just the use of it, because there's gonna be other. Other board, other, the state was going to look at it because there was gonna be a date, uh, not a daycare, but a, you know, mental health facility. So they had other requirements that they were needing to, so almost acted as a, a check on what had had to be done. But nothing was checking on the outside. And they're behind the left, they're like, oh. I don't know if we could look to see like a typical, they got those four or five people parking. What's the typical, so we have a checklist, if you need four or five parking lots, you need so many square foot of parking. And so this is what you'll need to show on, you need to show, you know, two, twenty-four thousand square feet of parking and three spots and. Just a little, just a little, it might take a little work, but at least it'll be several items that we know we have issues on or could, you know.
But do you take that word forward or do you require an engineering? Uh, that's, that's the problem is, is their plan showed them having four spots, but.
I mean, then, then it's like, it's not very hard to, to get a, just, I mean, it's not real. And he took it the wrong way about.
Yeah.
It's, it's. Well, but I mean, I, I don't have me math skills, but I mean, the other damn things off.
Do we rely on our planning department to look at those kind of things and say, yes, no, this needs an engineer, this doesn't need?
But that's a lot of work to, 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 to pay and curate to do that. So I, I don't know if that, what's the threshold?
Yeah. Yeah. How many site visits do you, do, do you do, how many of these, do, do you look at?
Just, just about every, most sites that are, you know, that we have an application.
Okay, you didn't look at this one on.
I didn't look at that, I mean, I driven by numerous times.
What do you think, Rossi? I mean, you, you come on.
I like the threshold part of it, but I can understand how the applicant, you know, the engineer's on cheap.
No.
You know, but the thing is, is in back, you want to make sure parking's huge for a business, you want to make sure that access is adequate, back and in and out.
Discussion with one.
Yeah.
That was, that's.
That would probably be.
And maneuverability inside the law with the vehicle, um. Maybe something needs to be set up with official, that's the fairest way.
It's the fairest, it's like, okay, you know, then it's like. Then it, it, it almost forces them to think of their business too.
How much are we gonna do here?
You know?
Yeah.
So how much can we do?
Or, or I need to look at that before you.
Yeah.
And just before they go and do something, you know? Purchased a lot like he was having.
I mean, that's the other thing.
Yeah.
But they can come here and say, you know, I'd like to do this, but I want some guidance. So what are you going to require from me? And like, well, we say, well, we need to make sure that you have the adequate amount of parking. So you're gonna have to come to us with a prepared plan where we have something to look at, you know? But at least, you know, including the items that, you know, where you feel comfortable in reviewing the application.
Did you, does Kurt have some ideas besides you guys are working?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what we would talk about, you know, just the same ideas and everything. You know, ADA is always a must, you don't really have a choice on that. Everything in parking and turning around and, uh. Which is always vacant, particularly on Route twenty.
Yeah.
And so like what the use is too, you know, obviously a restaurant takes a lot more than the consulting, but, you know, so.
Right, and also like if they're gonna be getting deliveries or a bigger vehicle rather than just a car.
Anything like that, I think that's, that's over the limit.
That's all right. I mean, that's, that's, but in the, they're, to gee, these guys were just, you know, that kind of work.
Yeah.
It, it just fit in that way.
I think it fit right on the line of that.
Yeah.
I mean, the location. Yeah, I mean, we covered ourselves with it, with the requiring the parking.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Before we even saw it on site, we, we had to do it wasn't, wasn't right there. And they still have to come back and go, so it isn't right, and it isn't right. And it might require more engineering, but from a economic development point, I'd love to have some quick, easy, cheap application. That you can look at, say, okay, boom, 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 boom. And not, but we could always throw a flag and say, no, you need a full site review, you know? I just don't like arbitrary things that, that, you know, I'd rather have a rubric you can look at. You know, it's, it's, this, this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you check this box, here we go, you apply to this.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Just like.
From the O R chat.
Perfect. That's what we try to come up, something that, you know? So they're not overwhelmed, like, I gotta do all this and it's gonna cost, my engineer's saying it's gonna cost me how many thousands of dollars and all I want to do is this, you know?
Change it from a coffee shop to a bakery. You know, I have to go through a site plan review, you know?
Yeah, a different handle there.
But they may not know that.
Yeah.
Go, then they may never do it because they think they have to do a site plan review or something, you know?
Yeah.
So, I mean, what, what do other towns have?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I mean, towns that I've worked with, I can't say in this general area that, that it's been broken down by like, you know, how many square feet of, uh, new development during, are you adding so many square feet to a building or not? You know, things like that. You know, but I mean, still, the, the minimum amount of information is still required, parking. I mean, there's certain things that you just have to know.
The businesses.
Whether they're, you know.
Water, sewer.
Right. Whereas the, it's a much simpler process than doing all, everything like, you know, a, a full-blown application. Use all that stuff like drainage and stormwater and all this and a small act.
Yeah.
Might not need all that, you know?
Scam owners, yeah.
And that's stuff that costs money to an engineer to do all that.
Huge, so. Good art, so we have kind of some sort of direction.
I mean, we'll work on it.
Yeah, yeah, work on it.
Together so that we can show.
Maybe look at other examples.
Kind of talking about.
Language.
Yeah.
Wow, there's some other towns around, let's see if they have something.
Bring it up to E D P, they'll be happy to hear that we're only considering.
Something.
Well, we know there's, we, we, we realize that there's an issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the big thing, first you have to realize you have a.
Like a warehouse.
Then implement something, take care of the problem.
Yes, sir.
So, all right, next up, we have other business owner time and posting, so our next meeting on this.
Just want to.
Go right ahead.
I think, uh. Anthony had a, he has a question that he wanted to go to the board on, uh, dogs. And so he, I want to do that as a separate item, so.
Yeah, okay.
Emily is actually on Zoom right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, she's Charlton?
Yes, um, just because, um, just kind of over our discussion, um, and this is me not as a business owner right now, this is me just as a. Resident. Resident of Charlton, trying to understand the bylaw changes from twenty twenty-two. Uh, because throughout the discourse, uh, the discourse that's happened, uh, in the board, there's been kind of a lot of stuff thrown back and forth about kennels. Um, mass state law differentiates between three different types of kennels. There are veterinary kennels, uh, personal kennels and commercial kennels. Charlton has simply kennel listed in their stuff. Several other surrounding towns do differentiate between personal kennels and commercial kennels, but Charlton does not. The way the bylaws currently read is that anyone who, um, sorry, I'm sorry, the way that the bylaws read is that if you have a business that wants a kennel, you have to come, you have to get a special plan. The way the special permit application reads is if you want a kennel, you have to come before the planning board. So there are some discrepancies that we're just looking for clarification with, and who gets the final say on things? Um, obviously, kind of my personal stake in this is once I do move my business out of town, um, how many dogs am I allowed to have? Who gets the say on that? Because if I want to have ten dogs, do I have to come before the planning board again to ask you guys? Or because it's not a business at that point, do I get to just discuss that with Emily? As it's written right now, I need to come before the board. However, if that is the case, then any other of the nineteen other people in this town that have kennel licenses have to do that every year. Kennel licenses are not renewed, they expire. So everyone would have to go through the kennel license application process with the board yearly. Um, and just knowing what I spent for expenses in doing that, that's about a thousand dollars out of pocket, um, with the application fee plus all of the mailings and everything. Um, so I'd just like clarification on that, I know Emily would like that too. She's had a couple of people who've wanted to move to the town, but read the bylaws and don't understand how they're written and are leery of bringing their five dogs to town because they don't want to have to go through that process. So that could just be a discussion point, that would be amazing.
Yeah, I think we should clarify that, I think that's, that's fair.
That means.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
So. Um, I just have one, I don't know about the, it's technical about the licensing. Um, kennels right now are inspected yearly. If it's a license, if it's a kennel, for-profit kennel, where, where.
So our home kennels, every kennel is inspected by animal control.
So at what point does it, is it considered a kennel? If I put a fence out.
More than five, five dogs or more.
Five dogs, okay, that goes back to, that goes back to our fees.
Yes. Some towns have that set at a lower threshold, but the mass state laws is four dogs or less, you do not require kennel license. Five dogs or more, you do, and then there's the, the fee structure. Um, Emily, if I'm speaking for you, I apologize, we've just obviously been back and forth a lot with all of this stuff. So I think we're both pretty much on the same page with everything, so if she has anything that I'm incorrect about, by all means.
So who, at this point, issues these yearly kennel license?
Emily.
Emily. She does, she does a physical inspection of every kennel.
And then that's associated with an approval of a license for the next year.
Right, we, we cannot issue dog license from the town clerk's office without her approval that she's inspected it and it is fit.
She has to determine that it's humane, that it is, there's enough space, that there's adequate water, um, that there's adequate housing, all of those different types of things.
And then they pay a fee to the dog license fee, um, but they get a break on, it's not per dog, it's like from this many to this many dogs.
Oh, it's group.
Yeah, yeah, it's tiered.
All right, so I guess there's something the board has looked at as far as.
Just the wording, just the actual technical.
Verbiage of.
Verbal.
Yeah.
Although.
But Emily, what, oh, excuse me, are you there?
You are, you're on mute, can you hear us?
You're looking very thin.
Uh, she said her baby is in the room with her. He has a fever.
Oh, is he so sick?
So, you know, in.
Wake up time.
In my, uh, my personal feeling is, and dog lovers can, I, I have pets, I have dogs, but, um, more than five dogs could be disruptive in a, in a neighborhood. So having a five dog limit as a personal ownership seems reasonable to me. I, I couldn't imagine having more than five dogs.
Well, I, the problem is, the way the bylaw.
Yes.
Five or more.
Five or more.
So that.
That's the dog.
That's, that's kind of hard because if you've got a dog and you're, and you're, because I know people have dogs and they.
They have a litter.
They have a litter.
They don't count until they're a full month old.
Okay.
Four months.
No, that's, that's mass state laws, there's a, there's a threshold for those.
So you could have two dogs and all of a sudden you have twelve. As long as they're not there four months later, you still back to two dogs, you're okay.
Well, how, does it take for, when do you usually, the dogs leave their mom?
They leave after eight, uh, six to eight weeks, um, but usually if you're like a breeder caretaker, sometimes you have them until twelve.
Okay.
Um, so, but again, none of that ever meets the threshold for, for mass table.
So, so I don't know where we'd want to set that threshold or how we want to change it to.
I think we need to review what's on there now.
And make sure at least they, they match.
Right.
Cause, so what would your recommendation be that the bylaws pick up the same three classifications as veterinary, commercial?
Well, I, I, I guess my, the, the, the real question is, 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 and I hate to say it this way, but who's gonna get the inconvenience? Because either people who have kennels have to spend a thousand dollars yearly. Um, or um, the neighborhood doesn't get a say in whether or not there's a kennel. Hmm. And the thing is, is there are currently, as of the last time Emily and I talked, nineteen kennels in town of Charlton. Um, I think I might be the twentieth. I'm not sure about that, and those are personal kennels, those are not commercial kennels.
And that's five or more dogs.
That's five or more dogs. There are, um, I believe two with twenty-five dog, uh, kennel licenses. Um, at least five with ten to twenty. Um, at least five with ten to twenty-five. Um, and then there are, are many that have more than five. Um, so, because when you're a dog lover and you start adopting rescue dogs, that's what you do, that becomes your hobby, um.
And I think that was probably the intent. Um, basically, if it's a spay or neuter dog, it's ten dollars a year. Um, if you have. Up to, if you have five or more dogs. That will cost you like fifty bucks a year. If you have five or more dogs for a kennel license, it's thirty-five dollars a year. And that's.
That blanket.
Right, we just have to make sure that they only have five dogs. But then we go back and we individually license each dog.
They have to have rabies vaccines.
Basically, just to make sure their rabies is, are up to date. Yeah.
Okay, do you wanna, do you wanna get that bylaw and look at it on our next agenda or at least get, get a night on it so we can?
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
They get the state bylaw.
Yes, and maybe look at some of the other towns.
Emily, maybe be, be able to write a state one, I mean, I'll.
I have a question about rescue dogs, so typical, the rescue dog, you rescue the dog. Do you, is it an intent to give it to another family or to keep it yourself?
Generally, people do that, like they just keep the rescue dogs, um.
You can foster and.
Yeah, so you can foster dogs, technically though, those aren't your dogs and there's no bylaw on how many dogs you can have on your property that aren't yours at a, at a time. So like, you could foster as many dogs as you want, uh, it's just a matter of, of which dogs are personally owned by you. Um, and then, you know, like for example, in my case, um, you know, I, my, it is my intention to train service dogs, um. Those, that's a very different level of training. I was trained through Kennon Crews for Independence, those dogs are with you twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, um. Uh, the way I'll be doing is, is kind of like, you know, groups, so we trade, you know, transitioning our dog, but they'll all be my dogs. Um, until, you know, such a point as I can either give them to a nonprofit organization, which is likely what ended up happening, um, or, or not. So, um, but. But yeah, so it's really, I mean, that's just me personally, but there are other people who don't do that. They just go and they rescue these dogs and then they just become part of their pack. Um, that's kind of the average way that people do stuff and, um, it's really more for, for those people because, again, just all this discussion about. You know, business kennels has brought up, well, it was actually discussed at one point in one of the meetings that the purpose of the. Kennel regulation in the bylaws was to limit the number of dogs on properties that weren't deemed appropriate for it, um. So what does that mean retroactively? Because if, if that is applied retroactively, because again, they expire, they're not renewed. Then everybody who's had a kennel and already has these dogs has to do this, um. In conjunction with that, you know, my grandparents had a kennel on this property with a ten dog license for. A decade and, um. If, you just, so does, if there was ever a kennel, does that now permit there to be a kennel on that property? Yeah, yeah, so like, so those are kind of just all discussion points that, um. Uh, I, I just, right now, it's, it's a little bit convoluted and ambiguous, and I, I think that it just needs to be clarified because. Only because I know Emily's gotten calls from people wanting to move to town and right now it's a deterrent for dog owners. And there's a lot of agricultural land in trouble, um, that can. Support more townspeople, support more taxpaying townspeople, um.
Support more dogs.
And support more dogs, I mean, and, and there are kennels here, you know, we have the park, we have, um, there's a couple of training facilities, I know in the pipeline. Like for some scuttlebutt, that there's at least two more dog daycares, probably in the next five years that are gonna be coming before you guys to open up. Um, and that's gonna be more revenue for the town. So in order to, you know, for those businesses to be successful, there'd have to be dogs here, um. So.
All right.
Just verification points.
Perfect, thank you very much for making us aware of that.
Um, so if, just keep an eye on the agenda, the minutes and then. Because I'd love to be here for these discussions.
Keep you informed.
Yeah, that works too, Jess, you can contact me, so.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much for your time, I really do appreciate it.
All right, other business unknown at time posting.
So, yeah.
You already had your one.
That wasn't mine, I never.
Wait, hold up, Jane has her.
Go ahead, Jane, what you got?
That thing, um. Disessors, they're brought it up again about that X Y axis thing and how, um. They really, really need. And I'm not totally clear on it, but it's something to do with the plans so that C M R can, C M R P C can map it out. Very quickly and more accurately.
That, this is part of, um, they want to. Uh, have. Plans submitted electronically.
Yeah, thank you.
And done on X Y axis versus a PDF file because. That's how, um. So when lot lines are done, you know, any changes to the map. Doing it on the X Y axis makes it more user friendly for them to amend our maps.
Good, do we already, do we already, sorry, do we already require submission through electronic means?
Yeah.
We need to be a little bit more.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm just gonna make sure that works, we're just not getting paper.
And this, uh, PDF files don't work, they need to get it on the X Y axis.
And what software, what particular software is, is there? Is it pretty standard use for, for all the?
Everybody's telling me and I don't.
But everybody has a different cat.
Yeah, with the form that's required to be submitted, it's, it really was. And, and most CAD packages, they submit in different formats anyways, and you can choose which format to submit something in. It's as easy as giving you a PDF, they just give you.
I know, what, the town habits for cats.
So it's more what they need, we, you know, we pay for their services to do that every year, so.
So that's all they need to do is tell you what it is, and then when somebody submits you, you just ask.
See, I need it in this file format.
If it's not in this.
Yeah, I mean, when you're doing zoning, it's just you shape out. Simple, but when you get down to changing lot line. Much more specific.
Thousand feet is.
But then that's gonna be a bylaw change, we just have to change our bylaws.
Well, as, as since they're coming in, they need to say, no, we can't accept it this way, we need it this way.
Well, and that's the same thing, it's like adding that onto the list of.
Oh, okay.
You know, submission items, you know, electronic file done on. That makes, that's part of the complete application, right? So we make sure we get it.
We still.
All right, so. On November fifteenth meeting, alls we have on there is, uh, Curtis Hill subdivision. So do you just wanna just have a meeting December sixth and not have it the fifteenth?
I would love that.
Great.
Go ahead.
Hey, so what's your, can I ask what's going on? Any further progress on South Bitter, uh, Scirbit Road fifty-three?
Oh, they're, they're working on the wall, that's, that's.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, the one.
They closed on the property.
Okay.
Um, they're gonna start the clear, street clearing. Like very soon.
Are they gonna submit a new subplot, uh, subdivision, uh, sorry, a new site plan or they're going with a site plan that was submitted prior?
Is, right, and now there are ten schools, so. You know, and they, they're well aware that, you know, this changes, you're gonna have to come back to the boards, but.
Okay. Sounds like somebody's building a spec warehouse that they're hoping somebody moves into, or do they actually have a tenant?
I, I think they have respective tenants, but they're keeping it close to the best because they. You know, I can't see them spending that kind of money on a, you know.
Who's spec?
A spec warehouse, you know.
Well, people don't ever do that.
One point two million square feet, that is a little bit bigger than a two car garage. I think, but typically what happens with these is even with, uh. Our expectance is, they don't believe anything till we start seeing work done on the property. Like, it's like, oh, now it's for real, right, you're getting, getting ready to build, so.
Any other? Any other plans coming up that, that the board should be aware that's, that's gonna be happening, that may be becoming before the board that? Discussions with, it'd be good to get that, you know, kind of weekly, kind of get an idea of.
And one sooner than later for, uh, multifamily development, one on trolley crossing. And one on North Main Street, one on trolley crossing, they've already been out there doing test pits and everything. So we're gonna see that one soon. And the one on North Main Street, having talking, but we haven't like done anything concrete yet, and. The battery storage facility, they, they wanna. They wanna build now, but they gotta go through town meeting and all that, so for that one. And now the damn party sold that property.
Is pushing the other ones.
Needs pushing the other one, um, over, um, you know, where the water tank is, so. You see, the whole, that's his last big holding, you know, you. Finish everything in strawberry, he needs to finish everything in Audrey, so.
They put a, uh, they're putting, they're putting a, a, um, holding line power, putting a battery farm up. At their power facility, there's a big ride up in, but.
And Holden, did you say?
Yeah, Holden, uh, the, the chat.
Yeah, the battery.
And actually, at our next meeting, they, there's this incoming and everything, um. Uh, the. The gentleman that wants to build the. Solar farm off Brookfield Road. Um, the eight hundred acres worth.
He said he'd be back.
He's once coming for an informal meeting. He's trying to get the town to get on his side and Andrew said, no. And I said, you, I said, you gotta remember, this is a town, it said. No more, you know, the flame. Said Woody and then somebody, uh, town, a resident stepped up and said, no, I think we should make it.
Said the attorney general.
They didn't. We'll find somebody to force.
Interchange off of the pipe, it's like, okay, once you get that interchange approved, then we'll talk.
Which you convict and convince the, the electric company to hook it up, then we'll.
They, they. Back them up and the towns, no, not biting from that end and, you know, they.
Could be.
No way they're gonna coordinate.
No.
So I, so he wants to come back in front of the board.
Yeah.
How much time, how much time do we give them? Cause I, one thing that, 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 you know. We get these people to come in here and talk for hours and hours and hours and, and just waste that time that I know we're not, so. We say, okay, you have ten minutes, or you have fifteen minutes, make sure there's a hard cutoff on that.
Well, that's why. He strategically placed at the beginning, so we have all the.
Through the chair, can we keep that limited to, to a certain amount of time?
Yeah.
That's my only. Is.
That's fine.
You know, they'll keep talking until they think you have, have you convinced, but.
So do you wanna skip to November fifteenth, three, since we have that one agenda rate on, currently?
Yes, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
On the motion. That our next meeting, the, um, December sixth, twenty twenty-three.
One of the things we do have to have all bar, boards meeting.
Seven.
Yes.
I said, yeah, I second.
All those in favor?
I, I.
All right, now, are we gonna have a second meeting in December? Cause that'd be about the twenty-first?
No, um, typically, we only have one meeting, and so close to the holidays.
Okay.
Typically hard for everybody to get together for long.
Okay.
So the next meeting, after that, I believe, is January third.
Yeah.
Good. Now that we're out. Just.
There hasn't been a motion to adjourn yet.
No. Not yet, you want one now?
One more thing, Nick? One more thing.
Oh, and by the way. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye, aye.
Aye.